Call the county board, meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody that's here this morning. Want to call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to add the first, under the regular agenda, Foley Fiber update.
Would that be right after consent?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
We have no other items.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The county board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube, please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that your views can be heard. The county board observes Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or the public hearing. However, public comments on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn your cell phones to vibrate, thank you. Open forum? Nobody back there, I'm sure, okay. The consent agenda, we have consent agendas numbers one through six. Does anybody wish for any of them to be pulled for further consideration?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the consent agenda with numbers one through six, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. At this time, we'll move to the Foley Fiber and Commissioner Kapinski.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. We just want to give a little update, we've been kind of going back and forth with some language with the agreement between the city of Foley and Benton County. There's, I have talked with Commissioner Johnson on this. We did strike the priority of the fiber build out for Foley, but we have since talked about adding some language to the contract that says Benton County will leverage to the best of our ability on a full county broadband build out, including the city of Foley. Okay, there's that one. Then, the cost of four, up to forty-five thousand dollars for engineering reimbursement to the city of Foley was also brought up. We have not seen any costs to date, so we can't, we don't know where we're at, so we're at, we asked them for where we're at to date on the cost. There is going to be a little bit because we're adding the potential of the interduct or the conduit, the empty one, in an alternate, so we need to figure out where we're at with the, with the engineering on that side of things. But we did only approve up to forty-five thousand. The twelve strand dedicated, we have no issue with the city working with whatever provider they want or that best fits the city of Foley, as long as it's for the city of Foley direct use. So, they can, they can work with whatever provider they, they want, as long as it's for the, the direct use of the city and they can assign those fibers. As for the permit fees, that came up as well. From our side, we, to keep everything clean, we looked at basically just saying, we pay our fees and the city of Foley pays their fees to the, to the county and vice versa, we pay ours to the city. So that nobody, it's the same both ways. That's really the update that we have.
When we do get that, the engineering cost, that'll be an itemized deal, not just forty-five thousand?
Correct, and I did, I did ask the city administrator for that last night, so I know she's, she is working on it, so.
And is there, when you talk about permits and that, how about, is there location fees for other utilities?
That would probably be a Chris question, is there location fees? In right of ways?
I apologize for, I missed the question, what was the question?
You want to ask?
Is there, like, if you go out and have low, you know, a location for other utilities, is there a fee that goes with that?
Yeah, when you own, own a utility, every, it's, it's like a dollar forty-five per locate ticket that comes across that you pay to the go-for-one-call system. So, once we own that, the county will start incurring costs, anytime somebody's excavating and any excavator, if they're going to be within two feet or so, they, they have to have the utilities located, so. Just, just out to our building, I mean, it's forty, fifty dollars a month of those locate ticket fees that we pay each month, so.
And we were going to be working with the city of Foley to, in conjunction with, because they're, they got to have their sewer line located as well. So, work with the same company, so they're not recreating the wheel and they, we do it together.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there anything else, Commissioner Johnson?
Pretty much updates it, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the update and for doing that.
Troy Heck, Benton County Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, today I have a required item for you, as I mentioned in the agenda item request. Twenty sixteen saw the passage of Minnesota statute thirteen dot eight-two-five. It regulates the usage of the data involved in a body camera system. As you're aware, in twenty nineteen, we initiated the, the outfitting of our deputies' body cameras, so we've been accumulating that data over the last couple of years and we are, we have reached the point where we've now required to have an independent audit done to make sure that we're following the rules that are set forth in the statute. As you noted in the agenda item request, the written documentation I submitted, there was one small finding in our audit when we initiated our, our system. Some of the default settings for the retention were less than the ninety days required in the statute because these were, again, test recordings that would not be saved, not be for any evidentiary purposes. However, the law states that if you record it, you got to keep it for ninety days. So, when that was discovered in the audit, we went back and we changed that setting, so that audit finding has been addressed. Save for that one finding, the audit states that we are in compliance with all the other things identified in the statute that we are required to do. So, we submit this audit to the county board to review and accept.
Any questions, comments?
So, you're, you have to hold the tests for ninety days?
Any data that we collect has to be held for at least ninety days with that, any of the film, any of the footage captured by a body camera. Depending upon what category it is, that is going to be extended longer. So, for example, if we have a deputy that conducts a traffic stop and perhaps ends up with a DUI, that data is going to be held for several years to make sure that it's available as the court progresses through the case. We have different categories for different events that deputies are going to select when they're at the end of the recording to make sure that it's held for the proper amount of time. But things like these test recordings that are of no evidentiary value, once the ninety days has elapsed, they are automatically deleted off the server, so we can, can reuse that space.
Okay, anything else? I guess, have, have data or footage, has it been used in court from our body cameras at all? Or is it, do you, has there been people that review it?
Oh, yes, it's been used routinely in criminal cases and it is, it is fabulous evidence. We've always had the squad car camera, I shouldn't say always, for many years, we've had the squad car cameras and that's been helpful. But to have that camera that goes with the deputy in situations away from the squad car is, is invaluable. Not only from an evidentiary purpose, but also from a management and performance purpose. When you have people that come in and say they object to the way they're treated by a deputy, well, we can go and look at the footage and, and see if they have a legitimate complaint or not.
When you, when you look back, probably from when we decided to do that, and I don't know how many years ago it was, twenty sixteen, you said?
I think twenty nineteen is when we initiated.
That was, in today's standards, that was a pretty good decision.
Absolutely. It is invaluable.
It wasn't an easy decision, it was a pretty good decision.
Yeah, I, I think that, yeah, the board made the right call in, in funding that and, yeah, we were thankfully ahead of the curve on that.
Right, yeah, so.
I'll move to accept the biannual audit of the Benton County Sheriff's Office body camera data.
Second. It's okay, motion been made in second, and does anybody else have any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Chris Byrd.
All right.
You're going to be up here for a while, Mr. Byrd.
I do, I have a lot to talk about, but this is good, good stuff.
You know, Chris, we're, I don't see anyone joining us by go-to, so I don't necessarily, I don't think it's necessary to screen.
Okay, um, all right, well, very good then.
Hey, it's easier to see the entire screen when we're not using that feature anyway, so.
Okay, good.
No one's with us by go-to.
I just want to bring this up, so the first item is good news. I think maybe Commissioner Pop reported this at the last board meeting about how there was some additional local bridge money approved in this last legislative session. And Benton County is the recipient of that, and the last couple of weeks, we did receive letters from the Office of State Aid telling us that we had permission to go ahead and advance our projects. So, we have two more bridges that are going to receive these local bridge grants. And, yeah, here's just a map of them. So, this bridge on County Road fifty-one, just at the southern edge of Foley, and this bridge just north of Highway twenty-three on sixty-seven. They're bridges that have been on our replacement list for a few years. We've had the plans designed and completed and approved for some time as well, and so we're ready to move ahead. And since we received that letter saying that we will receive bridge grants to, to complete those projects, we'd like to go ahead and move forward with advertising those for a bid letting. If you recall, recently, we just received bids on our other bridge projects, they did come in above our estimate, but the lead time for materials is four to five months out. So, we'd like to go ahead and advertise these for a bid opening, open those bids later this month with the, with the understanding that we probably still won't be constructing those until two thousand and twenty-two. I will just add that those were identified in our recently adopted five-year road construction plan as two thousand and twenty-two projects. So, even though we're advertising them now, they still will probably be constructed in two thousand and twenty-two. So, that's our intentions as the highway department. It is a significant amount, so, I mean, almost another five hundred thousand dollars of grant money to, to replace those two, two bridge structures, so.
It's great news.
That, that knocks a couple more bridges off the.
Yeah.
In dire need list, I guess.
It does, I think that'll be about taking care of, we, every so often, we, we adopt a resolution prioritizing our bridges and this, this will clean up that resolution, I believe, so.
Mr. Chair, Chris, of the four seventy-eight, five roughly, do you have kind of an estimate on what the balance is going to be for us?
Yeah, that's, that's almost eighty percent of the total bridge projects.
Okay.
Those two bridges are county roads, so they will be real each tax that will be paying for the, the balance of those.
Thank you.
And then we won't get into any kind of closing them down like we have in the past when they're fully divested?
No, these will avoid closing, hopefully we'll, well, we'll have to close the road down when we replace them. But, yeah, we shouldn't have to close those bridges before then, so, that's always good.
Great.
All right, any other questions on those? Move to the, the next item, which is on the agenda here, okay, road construction projects. So, this year, we all know how dry it's been, but it's been great for construction. So, we've moved through all of our construction projects and we're essentially complete with all the physical work on our construction, which has allowed our engineering technicians to focus on design of next year's projects. And so, this year, the first time, probably in my nine years here, that we've been able to get this far in our construction program. So, we're, we're working on the design of the two thousand and twenty-two projects, which is a full-depth reclaim of Cassaw three from Gilman up to the Morrison County line, a reclaim of Cassaw twenty-two, an overlay of Cassaw five, and then either an overlay or reclaim of this paved section of County Road seventy. So, the way things are progressing, we will probably be able to complete our design, our construction plans this month. We, as a department, would like to go ahead and advertise for bids this fall for those projects. And if weather allows, maybe go ahead and allow the contractor to do some work on those this fall and then have a completion date of two thousand and twenty-two. So, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. Once again, these were identified in our five-year road construction plan as two thousand and twenty-two projects. Three, twenty-two, and five were Cassaw state aid projects, so we have state aid funds available for those. So, timing of accounting and funding doesn't concern me too much. Realistically, most of the costs are going to be paving, which would still occur in two thousand and twenty-two anyway, so. If the board has any concerns with that, yeah, please let us know, but we're pushing forward with design, just keeping that much, that farther ahead in our five-year plan of road construction projects, so. Since it is state aid, once we complete our design, it does need to be reviewed by the state aid office before we have approval to let it, so. It would be probably later this month at best, before they're actually advertised for bids, so. But that's our intention, is to go ahead and get those let this fall and get contractors on and then, then we're kind of locking in our pavement, our bituminous prices for next year, this time of year.
It does look, you know, when you look at three, twenty-two, and five, all in the general facility, I think it would be in the best interest of one, one contractor to bid that.
Exactly, that's what we look for, we look for opportunities to do that, yeah, close distance, haul distance should be similar. It works well for us if we can tie those together and have one contractor for our scheduling, our technicians and managing the projects, yeah. So, that's what we're hoping to do, is tie those under one letting and have one contractor, so. All right. All right, we're going to switch back to, to bridges now. Good and bad. This dry weather, this extremely dry weather that we've been having has allowed us the opportunity to see things in our bridges that we haven't seen before. The bad thing is, we're seeing things that we haven't seen before on our. This bridge in particular, oh, five, five, one, eight, is just south and east of Foley here on County Road fifty-one. So, east of that bridge we're going to replace, we're looking at this bridge right here, just west of Cassaw six. This is the bridge we were discussing earlier getting replaced. The water is extremely low and we're able to see things on our steel piling that are normally underwater. And what we're seeing is concerning, so we have severe corrosion of the steel piling under what would normally be the, probably the normal water line. So much so that we're seeing corrosion through the bridge, that's a quarter, that's my hand, and just showing the amount of corrosion that we're seeing completely through the steel piling. Now, the steel piling is an H pile, so the cross-section is the shape of the letter H. And, and we assume that the, the load is distributed evenly over that whole cross-section. So, we haven't lost total capacity of it, but the structural capacity is reduced by the fact that they have corrosion completely through a portion of the piling. So, we, we took another hard look at it last week and we did what's called a load rating on it. We had a consultant bridge designer help us out with that last week and we will unfortunately have to post this bridge at a lower weight because of this, this condition. Right now, it's actually posted already at a maximum weight of thirty-two tons across that bridge. And we're looking at lowering that down to eighteen tons for a single unit and down to twenty-eight tons for like a tractor-trailer unit on this bridge. And this one, we'll have to prioritize it to being replaced the next time we can get some local bridge money. So, just some more history of this, this, this structure. It's about fifty years old, it's a timber deck on top of steel piling. About six years ago, we replaced one of the timber beams that supports the deck. We actually replaced the timber beam with a steel beam. The other timber beam that exists is starting to get mushy and rotten as well. So, its condition is deteriorating rapidly and as we mentioned earlier about cleaning up our bridge priority resolution, once we get those cleaned up, it looks like we have more bridges that we need to prioritize of getting replaced. So, this is something that, it's a bridge present in our five-year plan now, but it's something that we're going to start looking at and start doing some surveying and design work. And the way things go with bridge funding, local bridge funding, we'll have to probably do some work on getting it designed, getting plans approved and sitting on a waiting list until we can get some more state bridge money from, from the state. But I did want to make the Commissioners aware of that, that we will need to be posting this at a lower weight rating than what it is, was currently.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Chris, the paperwork shows County Road fifty, this is fifty-one?
Yes, that is correct.
West of County six.
Yep, yep, good point, it is County Road fifty-one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Chris, if we have to replace that bridge, what type of a bridge would be used?
So, this is the Saint Francis River and it's south of a point where our two forks of the Saint River come together, so. Initial thoughts are, this will probably need to be replaced with an actual bridge structure and not a box culvert like a lot of our other ones are, just because there's, the stream is big enough at this point, I think it's going to have to be a span, span bridge. But, technology's come a long way, design has come a long way since this was designed. Maybe we can avoid having piling in the, in the stream itself, so we'll just have to determine that through the design process at that point, though.
And Mr. Chair, Chris, so that goes from a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar box culvert system to what?
It probably adds a couple hundred thousand dollars to that, so probably at least a half a million dollar bridge replacement, so.
Mr. Chair, is there any other bridges or shouldn't I be asking that question?
Well, we're looking at a number of bridges right now and now's the time of year when we start doing, or maybe more later in August and September, we start doing our annual or biannual safety inspections, so there may be more that, that come up. And that's just the, the nature of things that we do, as soon as we get one thing done and completed, there's something right behind it that needs attention as well, so. I mean, here's the map of our, our bridges, there's a lot of bridges in our county that need attention and stuff, so. And like I said, we're, we're looking at bridges every year, some, some bridges in particular, it's only every two years, but there are at least some bridges we're looking at every year.
I guess, when I look at the bridge over fifty-one, I guess the, by posting it, the good part is that there's several alternative routes for trucks to go on on that one.
Yeah, that is an excellent point, and, yeah.
County six right there.
Six to go north and then just west, you got sixty-six, and then you've got Cassaw four here, so. I know that runs by one of your oldest places, but, yeah, so relatively short detour, just a mile around her, so.
That's fine.
Verbal abuse starts. Mr. Chair, and just remind, Chris, about how many bridges in the county again, total?
So, there's a hundred and twelve total that, and some of those are township bridges, but, yeah, a hundred and twelve total.
Thank you.
And Minnesota defines a bridge as anything that has a span of ten feet or greater. So, I think a lot of people drive over bridges every day and probably don't realize that what they're driving over is considered a bridge and requires annual or biannual, biannual safety inspections, so.
Right, so, and this one does need approval, right?
No, not at this time, this is just the information, so we will be posting it in the future. I will be bringing back another bridge resolution, we'll have bridges on that that prioritize it for replacement. So, this was just another information item. But moving right along, the next item I have before you is, does require an action. So, we mentioned it earlier, you are where we did open bids recently on two bridges to get replaced. It's on County Road fifty and on County Road eighty. Now that we have the low bids and a bid abstract, now it's time to get the actual grant monies. So, MINDOT requires a grant agreement, which is before you in this agenda. And this agreement spells out how much we will get. So, based on the final bid amount, we will receive two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents to replace the bridge on County Road fifty. The, the balance of the project will come from our sales tax. And so, there's a several-page agreement. I, I am happy to report that since the bridge bids came in higher than our estimate, the grant was able to pick up most of that increasing cost. I think our local match went up about five thousand dollars, where most of that was, is covered by the bridge grant. So, there's, there's what we have to come up with, this thirty-three thousand dollars. And since this bridge was identified in our sales tax resolution, we will be using our local option sales tax to pay for that balance.
Nice.
And, and the completion date, we just put a completion date out there that's far enough. Construction should be finished far before that, that actually allows us administratively to give us some more time to get all of our final paperwork done per this grant agreement. So, we put a completion date at the end of next year, just to give ourselves some time to get everything finalized. But there's the grant amount, part of this grant also requires a resolution to be, be adopted by the board. So, I guess there's kind of two actions that I'm asking for as part of this grant. First, adopting the resolution, then I'll scroll through and find here, it becomes incorporated into the agreement after we get past all the partial exhibits. We did have to acquire a couple additional easements to give us room to work. Here we go, here's the, the resolution. Once again, the resolution states the, the grant amount, the bridge number. And it does say that we consent to the Minnesota statute point seventy-four, point five zero and that we're liable for any costs above the grant amount. Yeah, and that the resolution is authorizing the, the county to sign this grant. So, I guess there's the two actions, is adopt the resolution and then authorize the board chair to sign the, the grant agreement for this County Road fifty bridge.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and authorize county board chair's signature on MINDOT agreement number one zero four six zero nine five.
Second.
Motion been made in second to adopt the resolution and, and authorize the board to sign agreement one zero four six zero four nine five. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Very good, thank you. All right, well now, we'll just repeat that same thing for the other bridge that we let at the same time. So, this is for the, the bridge on County Road eighty. This is a little bit larger structure, so it's a little bit more expensive. So, we will receive five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars from that grant for this, this bridge. Once again, two actions, a resolution and the agreement itself. So, there's what we need to come up with as the local match, seventy-two thousand dollars. And this bridge was also identified in the sales tax resolution, so that's our intentions, is to use sales tax proceeds to pay for the balance of that. But that is a, that is a significant grant award that I think we should be happy to receive. So, once again, yeah, we got the grant agreement here, we had the same completion date, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, to allow us time to finish up all of our paperwork before the grant expires. And we will have a resolution in here. This was interesting, we were able to acquire the right-of-way for this bridge that we needed as part of the future Cassaw twenty-nine project. So, that was a benefit that this bridge receives, that we'd already acquired the necessary right-of-way when we were acquiring right-of-way for that future road corridor. So, that's why these easements are shown in here, the easement documents, but it's listed as Cassaw number twenty-nine, because that's the future Cassaw twenty-nine. Although today, it is known as County Road eighty. Although today, it is known as County Road eighty. I'll scroll down to the resolution just so everybody sees it. Same thing, lists the grant amount, says that we agree to that section, that statute section one seventy-four point five, which says that we're agreeing to pay for any costs above what the grant covers. So if it pleases the board, I'm looking for adoption of the resolution and approval for the board chair on the, the agreement signature.
Okay, a motion to adopt the attached resolution, authorize County Board Chair's signature on MINDOT agreement number one zero four six zero nine one.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt the resolution and authorize the board to sign on local bridge one zero four six zero nine one. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So Chris, how are we doing with our house on sales tax?
Oh, yeah, good, I should look at those numbers. We're doing very well. It seems every month this year so far has been, we've collected more than we've done the, the, the same month last year. Let me, let me say that, so. Um, I don't know off the top of my head how much we've collected, but we, we have that data available. So I think we were about two million dollars total for the year of twenty twenty-one. And if each month this year, we've collected more than the same month last year, we should be above that, so.
I, I believe we were at two point six million last year.
That would, was I don't.
Yeah, so if we're collecting a little more, I mean, that's the substantial.
Yeah.
That's substantially more than the one point nine we anticipated.
That, that is, you're right, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair, that uh, the, the signs that you guys put up on the roads for the, this has um been paid for by the half-cent sa- or local sales tax look great too.
Good, good to hear.
They stand out and they're definitely eye-catching.
Yeah, we have some more to put up. We, we, since County Road fifty-five project is essentially finished, we got two to put up there because that portion was paid for with sales tax as well. So I think it's good to show, so you can see where that, that money is going. So we'll continue moving. I don't know if we'll buy more, but after some time, we'll probably take those down and move them on the next project that uses sales tax.
Sounds like a good idea.
I've had people comment on those signs. So I, I think they're well worth the money.
Mr. Chair, Chris, next uh, next board meeting, could you give us an update of where we're sitting with our half-cent sales tax?
I will certainly do that, that will bring that information um, at the next board meeting, yes.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate now while Chris is here, can you give us a quick update on county ditches? And, and my phone's been ringing a little bit about, here's the question, why aren't we doing something with it when it's so dry?
I, you know what, I've gotten calls too, and I, I agree that now would be the time to do it. The best explanation or lack of a better explanation is not done with all the paperwork. So I've been contacting our, our viewers, we've been in contact actually this week about some things. We're waiting on that redetermination of benefits on all, on those ditches um, before we move forward with a, a project to clean. So we want to know everybody that's benefiting from a particular ditch before we start uh awarding construction contracts to clean out, so. I'm still hoping that there's a possibility that this fall, we can let um a ditch project or two and, and do some work still yet this fall. But yeah, it is kind of disheartening to see that now's a good time, the ditches are dry, there's no water in them anyways. Now would be the time to open things up. And then you don't have to worry about pushing a bunch of water downstream on somebody that hasn't had it before, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed too, but that's the best explanation. We're just not done with all the paperwork to, that we need to complete before actually uh moving, moving dirt.
The other part that I use as a co- comment when I get them is that I truly believe that it's a better deal to do them in the winter. I think our bids are a little better, you know, because contractors are looking for work and most of these ditches can be done in the winter, you know what? They go in low ground with a lot of coverage and the frost don't go very deep. So that's what I use when they call me.
Mr. Chair, what, what are you seeing as a realistic timeline? I mean, what's your best guess?
Well, we still have to have some public hearings bef- when the viewer's report comes in. Wouldn't it be great if October or so, we're advertising for a ditch cleaning project that could be done over the winter? And hopefully then, then we're, we're not worried about crops in the fields being in the way or having to work around crops and things like that, so.
Okay.
My particular calls have been on ditch six again.
Yeah, that would be probably our first one. That was kind of the first one that we started this whole process, so.
I actually, for some reason, thank you very much to the commissioner from Stock Rapids, I get a phone call about county ditch three.
Yeah, uh, three, yeah, three, actually, that was one specifically that I was in communication with our viewers uh just yesterday about, so. Um, that was proven to be more difficult because we've got a lot of uh urban development that's contributing to that watershed as opposed to agricultural um runoff, so. It's, it's taking things a little bit more complicated. But yeah, I was told that that, that ditch is dry and it hasn't been dry probably since eighty-eight, when we had similar weather patterns.
Would you foresee county ditch three being a top priority when also then?
Maybe, just be, in the fact that it's a lot shorter than, it's probably the shortest ditch we have. So maybe something that we could tag on the same time as we do ditch six and have the same contractor do it. Um, but yeah, ou- outside of that ditch, it's all swampland. I'd always kind of anticipated that we would probably have to wait till ditch or that the ground kind of started freezing just to be able to support equipment out there i- in that swamp area.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chris?
All right, all right, very good, awesome, thank you.
I did get comments on fifty-five that said that they went so fast, they couldn't believe it and that it really is good, so.
Good, yeah, the dry weather helped it. Yeah, it did go fast, I think we were, we were kind of surprised that we're done at this point too, so happy to see it though, so.
At this time, we'll recess the, boy, right on time. Recess the regular board meeting to conduct human services.
Early. We did that on purpose, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
We'll call the other human services board meeting. Uh, Bob, anything to add to the agenda?
Yeah, a couple of things, I'm probably going to wreck your timeline. I, we've, I'm going to introduce Jaclyn, our public health supervisor, as well as Sandy would like to give some information as far as the uh homeless situation, so those two items.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, consent agenda, we have one, approve or amend the regular meeting, I'm sorry, number one. Entertainer motion.
So will Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bob. All right, I'd like to introduce Jaclyn Litvin. She is our new public health supervisor in uh, I, I don't know if I want to use the word studying to be our, our CHS administrator, but she is qualified to do that. And once she passes probation, she's going to be our CHS administrator. So without further ado, I'll ask Jaclyn to come up here and introduce herself.
Well, good morning, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Yeah, thank you, Bob, for the warm welcome. And I'm just, you know, like Bob said, I'm Jaclyn Litvin, so the new community health supervisor for the public health unit. And just really eager to be here and excited to be working here at Benton County and with our community here at Benton County. So Bob said you guys may be interested in a COVID update, would you like me to do that now?
Please.
Yes, please.
All right, well, we are seeing an increase in our COVID cases and our testing positivity um increase as well. So we did have an increase of thirty-seven new cases last week. Um, in comparison, just for some numbers, we were seeing roughly between six to ten cases per week um on average prior to that and the weeks prior. So it is an, an increase for us, um, of those that thirty-seven cases. Um, before that, um, you know, we were seeing weeks in June where we had, we were having zero cases per day. So it is an increase. Um, with the Delta variant, the Delta variant is spreading, it is the main variant in Minnesota. Um, with the Delta variant, there is a potential for exposure in Benton County as it is the main variant spreading here in Minnesota. It is highly contagious, so the recommendation is vaccination. So we are recommending for anybody who hasn't been vaccinated to get their vaccine. Um, that's the best tool that we have to prevent it from, for, you know, further spread. Some of the things that, um, you know, you may be interested in, uh, Minnesota Department of Health did a briefing early last week. They said that those who have been vaccinated, ninety-nine point nine percent of those who have received the COVID vaccine have not gotten COVID. So there've been very few breakthrough um cases. So that's um very reassuring, um, and very good news. Most of those cases and hospitalizations and illnesses that we're seeing currently are those who have been unvaccinated. Um, so that's the best tool that we have. Um, one of the things that's been new is there's some new updated guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health and from the CDC within the, just the last week and yesterday. Uh, Minnesota Department of Health put out some guidance yesterday regarding masking. The new guidance is for those um vaccinated and unvaccinated. Um, both indoors and outdoors and public spaces, the recommendation is to wear a mask. And then um for schools, there's also some new guidance that came out recently. So if you, I don't know if you saw that, I could go over some of the main highlights if you're interested in that. Um, but that also was recently um published as well. Um, but other than that, I'm just happy to help answer any questions that you might have. And as you know, we'll continue to kind of monitor that. But if anyone's interested in a vaccine, we've got that information posted on our public health website, as I'm sure you, you know we have that there, but.
When, when was your first day?
It was on July sixth.
Okay.
Just fresh, I've been here, what, roughly three weeks?
Mr. Chair, Jaclyn, welcome. Uh, just a quick question, of the thirty-seven cases, how many of those uh would include hospitalizations?
Um, you know what, I'd have to look at that, I don't know that we have that number.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Yes, thank you so much, yes, I appreciate the warm welcome.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce Sandy to come up and talk about the other topic.
So just real quick, because I wasn't on the agenda, um, but fresh off the printer is the homeless task force report from the city of Saint Cloud. Commissioner Heinen and I attended that, um, were a part of the task force. Um, and proudly, I would say that one of the four things they put on there was to create a regional task force, um, to, to, let's say, lead regional task force plan. So the idea is to bring all the counties and all the cities together. Um, so that was one of the four top um suggestions that is going to be brought to the city council as well. They um put the United Way kind of to be lead agency in that. Um, and we were clear that we wanted to be a part of this, so just to let you know that. The other three things that came up at the top of their list uh were to invest in maintenance of the current existing homeless shelters, um, to revise the city code about the length of stay in the temporary shelters and to increase or create a hundred new permanent supportive housing spots in the city of Saint Cloud. So those are the other three priorities they came up with. But we were successful in um getting our top agenda onto uh, into their vision, I guess. So I would just, um, I'll give you the rest of the report, they have lots of other things that they were suggesting, but anything you would add, Commissioner?
Uh, it was an interesting meeting, but I, I do, or I will say that Sandy and myself actually put a little pressure on them to make sure that we're a part of this, you know, and it was a tri-county area.
Yeah, I'm not sure this would be on the agenda if we weren't have been there, so.
That is correct, yeah.
And then just, just incidentally, during the last couple of weeks, we have had um a few increased um visits at our offices by some of the homeless. Uh, we even had one individual who took a taxi out here from Wade Park who was homeless and blind and uh was in need of services and has caused quite a commotion at both of, both of our offices. Um, so just to let you know, we're having continued interaction as well, which um we're not quite equipped to deal with at the moment, but just I'd share that as well. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I personally.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Personally, thank uh Commissioner Heinen and you as well for getting Benton County on this uh board. As you know, it's been a little struggle in the past, so thank you very much for your work.
Yes, just a note, as in two thousand and four, when we looked at who was on the task force council the last time they had it, Stearns County was the only county at the table, we were not at the table, so.
Mr. Chair, is uh Sherburne all in on this too?
Sherburne was at the table as well, yes. They may be not as vocal as we are, but they were at the table.
Okay, that's why we have you two there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Sandy.
I guess I could finish it up by asking if there's any other questions.
Any other further questions for Bob?
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, at this point, we'll uh adjourn the human services board and reconvene our regular board meeting, Mr. Chair.
Uh, we're down to Commissioner meeting updates. Anybody wishing to start?
I can go.
Go ahead.
Yeah. All right, mine's going to be, mine, mine's going to be pretty easy. Uh, we had a emergency services board meeting that was pretty uneventful. Um, passed the, the budget, that was really about it, just a lot of, a lot of different uh updates from inner board workings there. Um, I did have the medical services board as well, and then Dr. Thomas had, had spoke at that and actually brought up the fact that at that time, there was no open ICU beds in the state of Minnesota. And I, I've done a little checking, I don't know if that's exactly correct, but I'm not a doctor and I don't work in that field. But I, I know that Saint Cloud did have um ICU beds available um a day or two after this meeting, so um, you know, I think it, it, you got to take some of these with a grain of salt, it is very serious, so we don't want to downplay that. I think things change on a daily basis. And that does go to, it doesn't mean that the ICU beds are just not available because they're all taken, it could be staffing levels as well. So uh staffing is down and that was one of the, one of the concerns there. But um obviously, the, the broadband, uh fully broadband uh meeting, we gave a little update earlier. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, Monty, Mark, we've, we've had a heck of a team working on this, so uh hopefully uh that comes to fruition. I know the city of Foley meets tonight, is that correct? So um, um, we'll have more next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll go. So I want to elaborate a little bit more on this task force, homelessness task force. We actually had three meetings, the first two meetings were interesting. Then the third meeting is when Sandy and I jumped in and literally asked a lot of questions and did a lot of things to make sure that it was a tri-county area task force altogether, get everybody together. Pretty much just trying to leave Saint Cloud out of it.
Okay.
And just let the counties do it, because they're, they're providing all the services.
Yeah.
You know, Saint Cloud just has to provide areas, you know, zoning areas and all that. And we talked a little bit about zoning, but we shied away from that because of, you know, what is pending right now anyway. So the last meeting was very, very beneficial for us, for the county anyway. Uh, I also had a meeting with Commissioner Steve Grove. And that was an interesting meeting and I'm having another one tomorrow with them too, indeed, so, that's it.
Beth?
Um, I was in on the Central Minnesota Council on Aging and they went over their annual report. I think they were, um, they have a lot of funds left over because they only used about half of what they were going to use for last year. So they have funds to move around to help um things, the payroll increases and there's been phone, um, their senior linkage line has been an expense. The calls are going up and they take about an hour per call. Like um in June, there was um forty-five hundred calls. And so it's a bit of an increase, um, like Stearns County had like six hundred some, Wright County four hundred and some, we were down at one forty-three, but um, so they're they needed to switch funds for that. And then another expense that they had last year was with the extra lunches um through Catholic charities. But they had enough to move stuff around and finances look good for them.
Edit?
Yeah.
All right, I had a fairly light committee uh meetings the last few weeks, so that's good. Obviously, Commissioner Kupinski touched broadband stuff that I was at, so I'm not going to repeat all that. Uh, planning commission, uh, actually, I was not in attendance, I was able to attend my son's Legion State Playoff game, so that was really nice. I know the planning commission just had two uh conditional use uh requests in front of them that dealt with floodproofing, so they had a fairly light agenda also. Um, I did get in on a very good presentation by Soil and Water Conservation with Jerry and Wade Bastian and Kendra, uh updating me and trying to teach me all about one water, one plan. So that was a two-hour uh presentation of slides and so a lot of information, I've got a lot of learning to do there. And as you well know, that's going to become a large issue, so.
Right.
So just in the learning process of that, other than that, that's all I had.
Okay, well, as long as you were talking about one water, one plan on the twenty-second, we had uh the Rum River One Water One Plan. Um, they're, they're in a sixty-day state agents are reviewing, now the plan is actually drafted and done. Um, you know, and they're getting down, they have a balance of five thousand thirty-seven dollars left in their funds and bo- most of that is going to administration, which goes to Sherburne County. funds and bo- most of that is going to administration, which goes to Sherburne County. The plan is four hundred pages if you want to download it. I mean, can you believe that, four hundred pages, they said. We're not having an August meeting and we're gonna meet September twenty-third in Malacca, um, at five P M. to go over the plan and you're supposed to scratch what you don't like, you know, and it, there's, there's no, there's no, um, way to add things at this point. The other part is that they're still waiting for the, uh, the, the tribe out of the Malacs, Abandono Jibway, they don't seem to, you know, don't seem to come to the table, and some of it is if you don't come to the table, you don't get a voice. And, um, they don't seem to buy that, they think we should begin to reach out to them, well, we've been reaching out for a whole year and nothing's happened, so, I mean, my theory was, if you don't come to the table, too bad, so now they want to send two people up to meet with somebody up there, see why, so I don't know where that'll go. That could be the only thing I think that'll slow it down from not getting finished on time. So, and then back on the, the twentieth, on the, the third Tuesday, that evening, we had library board meeting, um, a lot of that you'll see in Karen's presentation, she's gonna come before us next week, I believe, uh, to do the library presentation. But the only thing we did is, we are gonna be into labor negotiations with the unions over there and Commissioner Wincher from Morrison County and myself will be doing the labor negotiations. I only volunteered because Susan's doing it.
Oh, of course.
Otherwise, I don't think I probably would have volunteered, but being.
You're getting pretty good at that.
Yeah, right, well, I thought as long as Susan's there and I've worked with her through the comp plan, then I, I could do that and, um, I think we'll be in good shape there. They do have a little bit of a problem with money that's in some kind of a health plan, that it's getting, uh, too much, too much money in there and it's, on the audit, it showed up as a concern. So I don't know what they're gonna do about that part yet, so that was one. The only other thing I had was that on the twenty-first, um, the Rice Chamber called and wanted to know, they had like a summer meeting with that. And one of the concerns that I heard at that meeting was the fully broadband. You know, about what's, what's happening there and, you know, how much is the county sticking into this, and so I did hear that concern out of that. And it wasn't a large concern, but it was a concern of theirs, I think basically because of what's, they got up in that area and, you know, county didn't help us, I heard from one of the old, old timers up there, so, and that was all that I had.
Mr. Chair, just a quick, um, back to the, the fully city council meeting tonight, I do have a conflict, uh, my squad is doing the extrication drill at the Benton County Fair tonight, so I will not be able to attend that, and I think.
And I have a conflict also, I will not be there.
Okay. One other thing is that we, you know, you were all there at the B E P quarterly meeting, we did have a board meeting afterwards, which was really interesting because Knife River came there and as you know, they became a member, they never were a member before. Uh, on a prorated basis, I think they paid five hundred dollars for the rest of this year, because they'll probably be in that, you know, in that twenty-five hundred dollar range after that, but they came to our board meeting and they want to work with B E P, they are short every, in every category that they need some more workers, and so they want to work on, on labor force stuff, they actually are willing to put money into it to B E P to visit with the high schools, the VOTEC schools and everything. You have, they, they said they can, they're not gonna be able to operate at this current rate very long. C D L drivers, he goes, uh, he did, I, he said how many C D L people they needed, it was unbelievable, that you could actually use that many right now.
Okay, on that lines, tomorrow at one o'clock, I have a meeting with career force, indeed.
Okay.
To try to figure out how we can open our facility full-time instead of part-time.
Okay.
So I'll be sharing that concern tomorrow too.
Yeah, yeah, they, I mean, you know, they're better than halfway through their season and they're still paying a sign-on bonus. If you go to drive truck for them today, you know.
Wow.
So they were really, I mean, they're really, they had brought three people in and, um, they want to get involved. And that's good for.
It's good that a big corporation like that is, wants a sign-on.
Yeah, yeah, so. Commissioner concerns, any commissioner concerns out there? Set committee of the holes.
Okay, uh, first is, I think it's already in our calendar, but, uh, you have more information here, the, the Benton Soil and Water Tour Practices. It's September eighth. You're asked to, um, arrive about nine o'clock or so, and then the bus will leave at nine thirty. They are asking for R S V Ps, so perhaps we could go, who, who plans to attend? Who would plan to attend? Uh, Beth, you taking note?
I plan on being there.
So all but Commissioner Heinon.
Oh, oh. That's Soil and Water, you said?
Yeah, this is the Benton Soil and Water Tour Practices, uh, so.
I tried it, I don't, I forgot my calendar today, but I've got it on the list.
You, we'll register, okay, so all but Commissioner Heinon will, will register for.
Just so you know, it's a pretty much all-day affair.
All-day thing, yeah.
Starts at nine.
Yep.
They try to get back to the Soil and Water office somewhere's around three, three-thirty, depending on how many questions they have for producers and, and how long they take.
Yep.
You want to feel Commissioner Schlangen in of what actually happens on that tour?
So the practices they had, I think we're gonna visit, what I understand is some of the practices from twenty-twenty that they did and what they got going on this year, out in, whether it's a wildlife refuge or, um, a creation of a wetland, uh,
Feedlot.
Feedlots, lunar management, stuff, um, we visited some, uh, irrigation, um, test plots, how they test how much water they put on, some of it's drive-by, some we get out and ask questions. And then we, I don't know where we're eating, usually we've been.
We usually stop for lunch at a town hall.
Yeah.
And they provide lunch, yep, yep. It's usually very information.
Very informational.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
They do a good job.
So we'll take care of those. Next is the A M C Fall Policy Conference at Arrowood. The pre-conference activities begin on Wednesday, the fifteenth, and the conference concludes at eleven-thirty on Friday, the seventeenth. So maybe we could get a sense of who Beth should be contacting for registration and also lodging arrangements, who, who would be interested in attending the A M C, so Beth, you're noting, okay.
October?
This is September fifteenth to the seventeenth, it's a Wednesday through a Friday.
I more than likely will only be there Thursday.
Okay, let's do this, I'm saying, I just want to get a sense of who Beth should contact for those, our Beth here for more details, so. Commissioner Kapinski for sure, Commissioner Pop, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Schlangen, okay. Okay, so Beth will be in touch with you about your specific arrangements, okay, how many nights, that kind of stuff, okay.
Got that?
Yep.
Thank you. Alrighty. I have a card here that says B C A T meeting. What's that?
Benton. Area Townships.
Yeah, Benton County Township Association.
Oh, the Township Association, okay.
Should be T A probably, but.
Yeah, it's the, uh, it's the Fall Annual Meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
Joe, Joe.
Yep.
Yeah.
The twice yearly annual meeting, Thursday, September thirtieth, seven-thirty, St. Georgetown Hall. And I know, no R S V Ps are necessary for this one, so Thursday, September thirtieth, seven-thirty, St. Georgetown Hall.
This is their third choice for dates, because they normally would have done it on the sixteenth, and they were gonna do it on the ninth, and that didn't work, the, Minnesota Association of Townships start, start their conference in St. Cloud, I believe, and so they went to the thirtieth.
So I have one.
They did that to accommodate us.
Nice. One final one, I, I, considering, um, uh, some out of office plans that I have and Commissioner Heinon's as well, I, I would ask if we could set, uh, our budget work session, uh, today. And again, this is, this is where the board, uh, makes some, reaches, reaches some consensus on policy issue, budget requests. Uh, the overall size of the levy and budget for twenty-twenty-two. So, uh, you conclude your budget meetings next week on Wednesday, the eleventh, they go ninth, tenth, and eleventh. So, uh, would it be possible to have, uh, this budget work session sometime between the sixteenth and the twenty-third? Sometime between the sixteenth and the twenty-third?
Of September or August?
Of August, of August.
I'm on vacation for three months in September, so that's why.
Three months.
Three months in September?
Oh.
I'd love to be on vacation for three months.
So, so I'm, I'm gonna offer you that window of the sixteenth to the twenty-third, or otherwise, what would be perhaps a window in September, Commissioner Heinon? What would be a window for you?
I will not be back until the twentieth.
So I'm sorry, when is your, when is your?
I'm leaving the fourth and I will, and then I'll be back, I return the nineteenth of September.
Nineteenth?
Yep.
Did I hear that correctly? Okay, so then another window for you would be the twentieth, uh, the week of the twentieth, that would be another window.
Of September or August?
Yes, you're the week of the twentieth.
The week of the, the sixteenth to, um.
Of August.
Yeah, sixteenth to the twenty-first, um, I'm pretty booked, I have, A M C has a thing going on and then, um, the Association of Counties is having their, um, board retreat at Two Harbors.
So then it looks like, uh, again, your other window would be the week of September twentieth, September twentieth.
How, when do we have to have this done by?
Uh, uh, we've scheduled a special meeting for September twenty-eighth to adopt the proposed budget and levy. So anytime the week of the twentieth would be fine.
How about September twentieth?
How about the twentieth, Monday?
I, didn't you say you were busy the twentieth and twenty-first?
That's August. We're in September, yep, we're in September, yep.
I'm assuming we have a board meeting on the twenty-first, so in September?
We do.
We have a board meeting the twenty-first, yes.
How about the twenty-second of September?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
That works for me.
That, that would be better for me, because I get home Sunday, the nineteenth, and I'm gonna have a lot of things I've got to take care of on Monday.
How long will this be?
Yeah, how long is the meeting?
Could we add it to the twenty-first? No.
No.
You know, it's usually a fairly lengthy discussion, um, and you're covering all the policy issue requests, um, you'll probably hear from the assessor on where our status value is going, um, review things not covered in budget presentations, so it, it's usually about an hour and a half to two-hour discussion, so.
Okay.
Thursday, the twenty-third?
We couldn't do it, couldn't do it on the twenty-third in the morning, I have.
You would have B E P that meeting that morning, right, um.
Wednesday, the twenty.
Twenty-second.
That's a conflict, Jared?
Uh, I'll, I'll have to deal with it. I'll, I'll figure it out.
You sure?
It's better than the twenty-third.
What about Tuesday, we have a board meeting?
I'll, I'll figure it out.
Friday, the twenty-fourth?
No, let's do the twenty-second.
Twenty-second better?
Okay, Wednesday, the twenty-second, nine, or you want to do afternoon, what works for you all?
No.
Morning.
Morning, okay, nine o'clock.
I, I was gonna be out of town here through there, but I'll just have to go after this and then.
That is all we have.
We'll be fine. I'll just go later.
Motion to set.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the cows as presented.
I'll second. Motion's been made and second to approve the committee of the holes, all in favor?
Aye. Opposed, carried.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna conduct a closed session.
So.
If you've got the time, if we could have that, sorry.
If, if you all could make that motion, that'd be great, and I just have to announce a couple of things for the record.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion's been made and second to go into closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
And Mr. Chair, for, for the record, uh, the, the purpose of the closed session is, is to discuss two parcels, uh, the parcel numbers are one, three, zero, one, one, two, three, zero, zero. We'll describe this as the court facility parcel, the second is one, three, zero, zero, three, zero, two, zero, one, and we'll describe that as the old high school property. And that just required in the open meaning law that we, we disclose in open session, the specific parcels to be discussed, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we have a two-minute recess?
Yes.
Prepare for closed session, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Mark?